Welcome to the council meeting of Tuesday, the 2nd of June in the year of our Lord 2020. Please be aware that this meeting is being live streamed and the video will be publicly available on YouTube. Members, could you please remember to speak clearly into your microphones? And can I ask, please, that when you're not speaking, if you could have your microphone or microphones, if you have two devices tipped off and one speaker at a time for clarity, that would be greatly appreciated. I'll just call for any apologies. Are there any apologies? Not that you can see, Robin, I don't think.
No, no, I haven't received any.
Great, thank you very much. The councillors and staff, before we start the meeting proper, I just have two announcements to make. It is with deep regret that I announced that councillor and deputy mayor Larry Bulldog has resigned as deputy mayor. I want to thank Larry for his service to the city over many years, and we can be thankful that he will continue to provide this service as a councillor. I also want to thank Larry for the diligent work as deputy mayor and for his loyalty and support to me in the first six months of my merrility. In this time, council has achieved many actions and decisions for the city and our residents. For example, the remediation of the Maua base track at 12% of the estimated cost, the fostering of cooperative and trusted relationships with Iwi and hapu, that again, after many months of inaction and contradictory decisions by the past council, we managed to transfer the title of 11th mission script to Naotamaroaho, a small but highly symbolic gesture that is an organisation we were willing to recognise and do the right thing. We've also achieved a great level of regional and national collaboration with our regional partners and with central government. Our partnerships with neighbouring councils have never been better, and our improved relationships with government ministers and departments have delivered significant infrastructure funding, more than 900 million, the key riding improvements in the Taronga Western Bay of Plenty, with the high likelihood of more to follow. And all this, of course, has happened during the Fiakari eruption, the escalation of gang violence and a global pandemic. So Larry, on behalf of us all, I just want to thank you for your loyal and diligent service. Councillors, I'm also delighted to announce that councillor Tina Salisbury has accepted the appointment of deputy mayor with immediate effect. In the short time Tina has been a councillor, she has shown to be herself to be a hardworking and diligent person with a good grasp of our strategic issues and a good eye for detail. Together with councillor Yako Arbery, Tina is serving on the Mural Task Force for Homelessness, where she has a long and effective background in understanding this critical issue for our city. I trust you will join with me in thanking Larry for his service and congratulating Tina in her role as deputy mayor and offer her your full support. Moving to number two now, the public forum, Dr Morris, welcome to you, sir. I had the pleasure of listening to you speaking at Auckland Council.
Oh, okay.
And on the, well, on the YouTube video. And we look forward to hearing what you have to say. So the floor is yours for 10 minutes. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr Mayor, councillors and staff for giving me this opportunity to speak. I am here representing an organisation called Direct Action Everywhere, or DXE for short. We have a New Zealand chapter. Our ambition is to stop animal agriculture by 2025 worldwide. That's the mandate of DXE. But I'm here for a more modest proposal to Taronga City Council. What I'm asking them, at a bare minimum, is to adopt the same proposal and policies as the Bay of Plenty Regional Council, which declared a climate emergency and as part of that brought in policies to ensure that all the food served at council meetings was plant-based. This is due to the fact that animal agriculture is a major driver of global climate change. According to international research by New Zealand scientists, it's about 23% of global warming potential worldwide. And within New Zealand, according to the Ministry for the Environment figures, it's about 49%. So it's a significant factor in our global climate change crisis. I'm also asking Taronga City Council to actually go further than Bay of Plenty Regional Council and become part of the C40 Cities Initiative, which cities worldwide, including famous places like Los Angeles and Beijing, as well as Auckland, discussing ways in which they can implement policies that will promote a change from animal-based eating to plant-based eating. I think it's appropriate that this meeting is being held during a global pandemic and the worldwide economic disruption that has gone with this, because one of the main drivers of these kinds of pandemics caused by zoonotic diseases is animal agriculture. We don't know exactly where SARS-CoV-2, the organism responsible for COVID-19, came from, but it is likely that it started in bats and spread to other species. I was just reading in Nature today that it's been discovered to jump to domestic animals and there is a possibility that it can jump back from animals to people again. So COVID-19 is not the only disease that's been caused by people invading animal habitats, exploiting and enslaving animals and keeping them in highly unhygienic, unhealthy and immunocompromised positions where they're pretty much walking culture media. The AIDS pandemic, ongoing 35 million deaths so far and counting, was caused by humans invading the habitat of our fellow primates, enslaving and eating chimpanzees. The 2009 swine flu pandemic, 300,000 deaths approximately, was traced back through sequencing of the virus to piggeries in the United States and Mexico. And the 1918 so-called Spanish flu pandemic, but misnamed because it was nothing to do with Spain, was actually traced back through isolating the virus, sequencing it, to piggeries again in the United States. So animal agriculture is responsible for a great deal of human misery worldwide, as well, of course, as misery to billions of animals. As well as starting pandemics, the slaughterhouse industry is actually spreading this one. There've been several reports in the United States, in Canada and Australia, that the slaughterhouse workers are major foki for this disease. And in all these places, these are vulnerable members of the community and now being forced through Trump's executive orders to keep working until they die or infect their community. So it is again, a human health and public health issue. If we took the short-term effect of methane into account in New Zealand, then the climate change warming potential would be even higher than the 23% worldwide. There are other associated environmental impacts such as habitat destruction, water pollution, topsoil depletion and the lack of swimable rivers. In fact, Dr Mike Joy, later of Massey University, now at Victoria University, has calculated that the dairy industry in particular costs more to clean up the environment than is actually getting from revenue, which means that in effect farmers are double lagers. So I've been in contact with a plant-based doctors group in the South Island who have been lobbying Nelson Council to adopt the C40's proposal and including Dr Mark Craig, a doctor in Auckland, who has managed to reverse several serious diseases such as heart disease, type 2 diabetes and cancers through diet. A major New Zealand study published in Environmental Health Perspectives this year by Dr John O'Drew at Otago calculated that if New Zealand went totally plant-based, it would save $26 billion over the lifespan of this present cohort plus 1.6 million quality of life years. So in conclusion, I would like to propose policies around plant-based eating because it's better for the environment, it's better for human health and it's better for social justice. Because we all know that disasters such as this pleasant pandemic, such as the climate disaster, such as air pollution, always disproportionately affect the poor and vulnerable more. The wealthy can afford to work at home, they can afford Zoom meetings, they can afford well-filtered rooms for air pollution and they're not having to be exposed to viruses or extremes of temperature. It also goes without saying that it would be better for the animals. In New Zealand alone, every year there are 140 million land animals killed. Now that, in a single year in a small country, is more than all the human deaths from every war, every gulag, every genocide and every Holocaust in the 20th century. And it's all for something that we don't need. And those animals are not moderately uncomfortable, they're in absolute hell. They're bred to be genetic freaks, chickens in particular, twisted so that their legs can't stand their weight. And Dr Temple Grandin, who's an international expert in animal welfare, has found that even in the best managed slaughterhouses, 10% of the slaughters are botched, which means that those animals are in absolute agony when they're dying as well. It's not necessary and really, there's no economic reasons either. It's actually the pandemic caused by animal agriculture is ruining the economy and plant-based products are actually cheaper. Dr John Livsey from the Canterbury District Health Board and myself have just submitted a paper to the New Zealand Medical Journal where we found that plant-based foods such as lentils, chickpeas, gluten flour and other plant-based products are far cheaper than animal products. The cheapest animal product is being awful, which is not usually considered very appetising. What's necessary, though, is better education of people so that they know how to cook plant products. And that's why I'm calling on the council to bring policies in place to better promote plant-based eating. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Dr Morris. We really appreciate you presenting to Taronga City Council. Councillors, any questions of Dr Morris? Councillor Cloud?
Yeah, thank you very much, Michael, for that illuminating presentation. What specific policies and mandate do you think council has to actually make a effective change as a city council?
City councils, as I know, don't have the same sort of power as central governments, but one thing they can do is they can be an example to others. So for instance, if all the catering at council, you know, for councillor meetings was plant-based, and I was quite encouraged to see that that was happening at Auckland Council, that would certainly be a start. Council procurement policies such as the C40 initiative would be another way. And I know that regional councils have more control over this sort of thing with resource management, but city councils as well with things like resource consents could certainly have an effect. But as far as the specifics go, I'm just doing this for further discussion. I just do think that councils as a whole do need to think about climate change, human health and of course, the impact on animals.
Thank you, Dr Morris. Did you have a supplementary, councillor Cloud? Councillors, any other questions of Dr Morris? Michael, I just had one. How many councils other than the Bay of Plenty Regional Council have adopted these practices?
As far as I know, Bay of Plenty Regional Council is the only one. But since it's within the Bay of Plenty, I thought it was appropriate that Taronga should as well. Auckland doesn't have a de jure policy, but it seems to me, just from observing the sorts of food that were served, that they do have a de facto one and Auckland Council has another one that we've been talking to, as you're aware.
Tremendous, Michael. Thank you very much for that. Robin, I've just got your message. What would you like to do with that?
I was just thinking, we have Mr Brian Hodge here as a representative of the Trust for the Sidnum Botanic Gardens. And I was wondering whether we should bring that item forward in business so that Mr Hodge doesn't need to stay for the rest of the meeting. So it would be a change to the order of business if that was, if that suited. And I think we just need to check that the relevant staff are here, but I think they are.
Thank you, Robin. Councillors, with your permission, if we could bring Mr Hodge forward, that would be appreciated. It does seem very logical. Michael, can I thank you for your time here today and rest assured, we will certainly give it consideration. And personally, what I'll do is talk to Chairman Doug Ledbut of the Bay of Plenty Regional Council and see what effect this has had for them.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Brian, I see you on screen. Are you able to address us at this time?
We, I think if we just work through and we just do it as a change to the order of business, if we work through the agenda, we're 10 big, so we go through three, four, five, change the order of business. And then if staff are here, the suggestion would be to take this Sidnum Garden item first as business.
All right, Robin. So we're on to number three, the acceptance of late items. I don't believe there are any confidential business to be transferred into the open. I don't believe there is any. Change the order of business if we can here from Mr Hodge at this point. It does seem logical as discussed.
Good morning, councillors. So thank you for bringing this paper forward to allow Brian to contribute. I'm going to hand over to Robin Scrimshaw that will just intro the paper and then Brian can tell us a little bit about the Sidnum Botanical Trust. Thank you.
Yes, good morning. Thank you. I hope you can all hear me okay here. And so this paper here is about the Sidnum Botanical Park, which is located in Brookfield. We have Brian here from the Trust to speak to the elected members today.
Robin, I'm sorry to interrupt. We can barely hear you. I wonder, can you speak closely to a microphone or something?
There we go. Is that better? I'll take out my headphones.
It is much better. Thanks so much.
Okay, so we've got Brian from the Trust here to speak to the elected members today. And this paper is in regards to the ongoing governance and the funding options for Sidnum Botanical Park. And so if I just let Brian speak to you all and then I can come back and answer any questions in regards to a way forward with this park.
All right, thank you, Rob.
Brian, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm quite happy to speak. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about this paper. As you're aware, that arose from submission made to last year's annual plan and to the Reserve Management Act review. Sidnum Botanic Park is an unusual piece of land and that's still owned by someone who died in 1973. And as a result of his bequest, Taronga City Council have become the managers of the land and will continue to be that in perpetuity so long as the Guardian Perpetual Trust is happy with what's going on. The land in question is about three hectares in Brookfield. It is adjacent to the Brookfield School. It has a flat piece and then it slopes down to the south to a stormwater pond, which is part of this council's stormwater network. The application or submission was prepared in December and life may have changed somewhat in the last four or five months. But the basis for it was that the original group was put together for five years and it was now seven years and that we were finding it increasingly difficult to get the funds that we needed in an orderly manner to be able to build things. Subsequently to that, we did manage to complete the pergola on the western side along the school frontage. Our suggestion is that we would, in our original submission, was that we should take the council laws on a tour and that that hasn't happened for a variety of reasons, but we would be happy range to do that, should that be something to help people consider this matter. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Brian. Councillor, are there any questions of Brian? Larry?
Yeah, I wonder, Brian, if you can, and hi, morning, Brian. Thanks for your long service to the advisory group and the work you've done there. This, the trust has been, there's two parts, and that the fundraising trust and your own volunteers. Can you just speak to the need to sort of refresh the members of the trust? And that that was part of the discussion last year and how a visit might be a really useful way to begin that process?
The original donation of the land to the council happened in about 2002. At that stage, I was a council employee, the group manager of city services. And the Guardian Trust came to the council because the council was the third in the list of beneficiaries of the land by Sidnum. And a trust was established to develop the land. That trust got into difficulties with some of the people who'd been occupying the land and with the scale of their development. And a news organisation was set up, 2011, 2012, in which there were two parts. The first part was the Funding Trust, which has a legal entity, is a charitable trust, has somewhere between three and six members and whose function was to raise money by making applications to charitable organisations who grant funds. That's by trust, Lion Foundation, those sorts of organisations. The second group was a group of about 12 people who were established to be both volunteers working in the park and also to provide a community direction as to what to do next. That group's probably reduced to about eight now with people leaving the district or getting other things to do. And both groups could do with some recruitment of people. And I'm uncertain as to the protocols, how to do that, because we were all originally appointed by the council. And I assume it's the council's prerogative to replace us or augment us as well.
Thanks. Thank you. Very good reply.
Thank you very much, Brian. Councillors, anything more for Brian?
Hi, yeah, Brian. Hi, Brian. I would really enjoy the opportunity to visit the park. Thank you. I'm just wondering, have the aspirations for the park changed through this time? And what are the aspirations for the park by this group at this time?
Included in the report is the master plan for the development. It's, I don't believe that they've changed significantly. There's been some detailed change in the species of trees provided because some have died and some new ones have been donated. died and some new ones have been donated. But the layout of having an open green space on the top surface, circled by a path with plantings of subtropical vines on the two boundaries and the sloping, south-facing face. And the wetlands area planted predominantly a native species. That's more or less been the scheme for the last seven or eight years and that remains the scheme. So it's really the completion of the eastern boundary and the path and some work on the areas which are still growing, tradescansia and other nightshade and all the other weeds that accumulate in places like that.
Thank you very much, Brian. Councillor, is anything further for Brian? Brian, there being nothing, thank you very much. Really appreciate you coming in and presenting to us this morning. Not sure if Brian heard that, Robyn.
Yes, I did, but I didn't see.
Right, thank you. Oh, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Lovely, thank you very much. Councillors, moving now to item six, confirmation of the minutes. There was nothing to do there. Declaration of conflicts of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest? Thank you. Deputations, presentations of petitions, I'm not aware there are any. Recommendations from other committees? There is a recommendation from the Finance Audit and Risk Committee from their meeting on the 26th of May. And from Councillor Salisbury, particularly as deputy chair of that committee, they would like to move the recommendation. Councillor Salisbury, you're moving this. Can I call for a second, please? Just wanted to say, thank you, Larry. Much appreciated. Tina, did you want to talk to this at all following your meeting?
No, just that I'm moving that we adopt the recommendation from the Finance Audit and Risk Committee as outlined.
Right, thank you very much. Larry, did you want to speak to this at all? Thank you. Are there any other comments on this, councillor? Councillor Robson, you're lit up like a Christmas tree around your box. Did you want to speak?
No, no, just getting ready to say aye when the motion's put your worship.
Very good. Councillors, I'll put them all those in favour.
Aye.
Aye.
We're on to item 10, conduct, sorry, code of conduct. Coral, did you want to speak to that initially?
Yes.
Sorry, excuse me, Mayor Timby. I just thought we were changing the order of business. Although we've heard from Brian, it would be helpful if we dealt with that because he's waiting probably to watch it occur. I thought we had moved that we were changing the order, not just having him speak as a early thing, but I may be wrong.
That would be, I think, preferable to deal with that actual report that was item 10.4, deal with it now while Brian's presentation is fresh in everyone's mind.
Thank you, Robyn and Larry, for pointing that out. I beg your pardon.
So if we move to item 10.4 now, the next item of business.
Yes, indeed. So there are three recommendations there, councillor. Can I have a mover and a second for those recommendations, please?
I'd be happy to move it, mister.
Thank you, Larry. Can I have a second, please?
Happy to second.
Thank you very much, John. Larry, did you want to speak to the recommendations?
Yeah, I will just, I think this is a fantastic park. It's been, had a bit of history, but it's really well appreciated by the residents out there and the trusts have done and the volunteers have done a great job over the years with limited funds. It's not easy to raise funds going forward for some of the capital projects. So I hope we will look at that C resolution that we would give some assistance there. The reason that trust got established was because back at the end of the GFC is a cost-cutting measure, a cost-cutting measure. Council decided that they didn't want to spend $30,000 anymore mowing the place and so they gave it up. And the response from the community was overwhelming. And so we ended up with this group of volunteers taking responsibility and council continuing to fund just the ongoing maintenance. Well, I think it's a really good investment to have a three hectare reserve right in the middle of that residential area there, which people really enjoy walking through and events being held there and so on. So I thoroughly recommend this. I do think a visit would be great if we all could go together rather than one at a time for those who've never sort of been there and understood how council's involved with it and a discussion around how to refresh the membership of the volunteer advisory group as well as look at whether the fundraising trust is a necessary thing ongoing or not would be very good. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Larry. John, would you like to speak to this as well?
I'm happy to reserve. I think Larry spoke well to it.
Very good, thank you. Councillors, any other comments on this? I don't, any hands up, John?
No, I think one of the things, I think Larry covered most of the points. I think, though, the idea of this sort of botanic living history, I think, is really, really valuable and important. And also, it pleases me to see council committing to perhaps a part of the city that doesn't get much. We often talk about the CBD. Indeed, I believe we've wasted millions talking about the CBD. But frequently, if you're not a new growth area, if you're not a greenfield growth area or you're not the CBD, you are sort of missing in dispatches. I know the member for Welkin Bay, councillor Bill Granger, is aware that some parts of the city don't get the attention I believe they deserve. All our citizens should be treated equally as much as we can. And I think this is, this is a statement above and beyond a commitment to a botanical garden, horticulture. This is a statement about, you know, thinking about the city as a whole. And I'm thoroughly behind it. It's a wonderful, wonderful place.
Very good, thank you very much. Councillors, I'll put this to you then. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Against and any extensions. Carrie, thank you very much, which leads us back to the item 10 on the business, which is the code of conduct. Coral, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. This is the code of conduct. It's a revised version that we're putting to you. Hopefully, it's, you know, well, you've become quite familiar with it in the last couple of months. I suppose the new things that it does is it introduces a number of new things. Regulatory register in section 9.2. It has a difference between a trivial and a serious breach of the code. And it deals with different types of complaints and there's a test for materiality. You can decide whether to establish a code of conduct committee or whether you carry on with the council hearing those complaints. So there's been a number of questions flying around, so I appreciate those have come through. So maybe I can answer some of those.
Thank you, Coral. Councillors, I'm sure many of you have questions of Coral. So if I could just see hands up, perhaps, I can see you all.
So perhaps if I just state at the beginning that it is your code, so you can add in what you want in terms of your values. And I see that there's been some additional values put forward and it's totally your choice and up to you. There's been a few recommended changes, which I'm sure councillor Morris and councillor Robson have put forward and they can speak to those. I, the idea, I really just want to say, the idea for complaints is that it goes through the mayor first, which is set out in 14.2.1. But if the complaints relate to the mayor or the mayor's initial consideration gets referred to the chief executive, then an independent investigator is brought in. So that, I just wanted to kind of clarify that part for you. There are appendices and D and E that hopefully are helpful to you to explain the processes because it can get a little bit complicated. And I was asked whether you have some flexibility in whether you refer the complaint to the council like you do at the moment or whether you set up a complaints committee. And yes, you do have that flexibility. And so it's not an and/or, it's an and rather than just an or. So my suggested wording, I've got some suggested wording for you, which I can bring up at that time in sections 15. And then it also relates to the appendix, which is the step and the appendix B, which is, you know, the diagram. I've also had some requests particularly from councillor Robson about the protected disclosures. And so my suggestion to that is that you include a paragraph in appendix B, which is the legislation. And I did email that a bit later this morning to you, so you may not have had a chance to read that. But basically, councillors are considered under the Protected Disclosures Act 2000, which is commonly referred to as the whistleblowers act. The definition of an employee and the public sector organisation actually extends to elected members. And so I thought a paragraph about that and a reference back to that policy, which is on our website, would be useful and may or may not meet councillor Robson's requirement. So I think I'll stop there and I'll let the councillors ask their questions and hopefully I can answer them for you.
Councillor, sorry, Coral, thank you very much for that. Councillor, questions of Coral? John, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Timby. Coral, I circulated a couple of emails to my colleagues and to the chief executive and obviously yourself. But the first thing that struck me on reading the draft was the absence of some of the key responsibilities of the chief executive in section, I think it is 4.2 of the draft, particularly those responsibilities that are on 42.2 and 42.3 of the Local Government Act. And specifically, there's one that was in or is in our current code of conduct, because of course, we have a current code of conduct, so we're under no pressure to change. And I think that's an important thing to remember here. But provision of advice to elected members, I mean, I'm, just to contextualise that for people who are listening, the machine, as I lovingly call it, has two responsibilities. One is to provide quality advice to elected members and the other is to execute effectively and efficiently the decisions of elected members. And the new draft seems to miss the line about the provision of advice, which of course, effectively is responsible by the chief executive. And the Local Government Act goes a little bit further and talks about, you know, the rationale for the provision of advice and what the advice is supposed to support. Is there any reason why we couldn't just take the lines from the Local Government Act that would seem appropriate? We're nesting this within much of the Local Government Act. Would that be acceptable or easy?
Look, it's your code of conduct and you can add in what you like if you feel that that is going to be of value to you and to the public. That's totally doable. And, you know, I'd refer probably to Marty if he has a preference. I think the idea was not to try and recreate all of the local government legislation, but yeah, it's entirely, entirely your choice.
Very, thank you, Coral. Very practical approach, John. Marty, did you want to comment at this stage on that?
Look, that's fine to include that from the Local Government Act would be fine.
Thanks, Marty.
Thanks, everyone. Councillors, other questions of Coral? Mary?
Well, just following up on your comments, Coral, about having that and, you know, so before we get to sort of the resolutions, if we can see that, because I think that's the option is to, I'd like to move that as an amendment or see if it can be incorporated, that we can have a choice depending on the nature of the complaint, whether it goes to an independent or whether council handles it. So we'll look, I assume you've got all that ready there for us and we can see that at the right time. Is that correct?
Yes, it's correct. I'll just check with Robyn whether she's got it up or I can just share my screen at the required time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Coral and Mary. Councillors, any other questions of Coral? Heidi, was it a hand up? Councillor Robson there?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just moving screens here, so I apologise. As you know, we have small laptops and I just want to make sure we get these topics right. I suppose again, Coral, I've made a number of suggestions and really, it's just looking for a comment on feasibility, practicality, sort of implications. You know, I think every councillor by nature is a bush lawyer and has a view on what's appropriate and not, but staff advice is always welcome. So specifically, the suggestions I'm making, and it's about whether that's possible rather than a judgment I'm looking for, the inclusion of the EM's oath and the preamble to the code of conduct, I think that reminds everybody why we're here. The inclusion of transparency is a principle. I know it's inherent in the Local Government Act, but quite often, I feel that the community's not as aware as I believe it should ideally be if we adhere to the spirit of the Local Government Act. The third question I ask is you, in the preferred, sorry, recommended preferred code of conduct, option one in the agenda, we talk a little bit more about sort of the levels. But I just wondered whether there was some value in indicating some defences that may be available. I believe in the past, sometimes, maybe not here, but certainly across the country, code of conduct complaints have been, and we already recognise, sometimes frivolous, sometimes politically motivated, sometimes, as the Massey University reports pointed out, of course, there's more than one Massey report, they can be a bit chilling. They've been designed to silence. So I just wondered whether defences to certain complaints, so I've been the subject, obviously, of a code of conduct complaint, forgetting legal advice. I mean, it was frivolous, it was thrown out, but it still required time and energy, someone to address. And the final one, and I thank you for that, is the idea that it may be that the nature of politics is the reference point or the starting point for a code may not be ideal. I think currently, the idea is everything goes to the mayor, but of course, the mayor may have political allegiances, which, and that's really what I'm looking at here, is there, is there another avenue? My personal feeling is going to the CE and taking it out of the political realm is a good place to start. But is there anything inherent in those four issues that could not be included for some reason in a code of conduct, rather than us having a big discussion and then the staff at the end advising, actually, we can't do it?
John, thank you. Coral, if this helps you at all. Et apropos councillor Morris's email of, I think it was this morning, it might have been late night, late last night. I'm very happy if its councillors wish that it goes to an independent source for review, that we operate in that way, if that's what council would prefer.
Yes, and those are absolutely your choices for you to make today. So I think I will answer some of your questions and ideas, councillor Robson, in order. And then I might hand over to Nick to talk about materiality and defence, because he's probably better placed to do that than I am.
Thank you, Coral.
So yes, you can have whatever you want in your code. You can have the oath of declaration, you know, under section 14 of the LGA. It's all about the size and the readability, but we can certainly put that in if you choose to. There is, in your standing orders, I went back and had a look at those, the principles that you've got there. And of course, they're very much And of course, they're very much aligned to the principles of the Local Government Act. And we can include a principle of transparency and some, I've got wording alike, members will conduct the business of council in an open, transparent and democratically accountable manner. So it's a very simple statement, but may or may not meet your your needs. And Counselor Morris has also requested that the principle of freedom of speech or free speech, which is included in your standing orders, also be included in the Code of Conduct. And look, that's absolutely fine. It's it's your choice what you what, you know, it's your your values. So it's very important that you 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 agree to them. The idea of defensive complaints, I'll refer to Nick, and the idea of the whistleblower legislation, I think we've talked about. In terms of the count, the mayor being the first sort of port of call, if you like, and then I think that was something that was recommended through the, you know, the the template from the Local Government New Zealand. But it really is entirely in your hands how you you do that. You have to be comfortable with it. I think it's the main point is to try and get rid of the sort of the trivial, potentially trivial complaints from the material and have a process for doing that. As long as you do that, I I would be comfortable. It's just don't trick every complaint potentially as a very serious complaint. It may not necessarily be. So you need some kind of triage at that point, and that's what the Office of the Auditor General was trying to say. So yes, entirely happy with what what you may choose to do. And so Nick may want to talk about materiality. If he's here, I'm sure he's here.
Well, Coral, through the mayor, I I would probably add just on the defences, this is this is a very classical administrative law code. So so, you know, a complaint is made, it's investigated for whether it's, you know, material, which is an exercise of judgment. And then people have a right to have a say. I I would suggest that might be quite tricky and may make it very complicated to codify defences because the circumstances that could be discussed through a Code of Conduct, as we know, are very broad. It it does regulate, I I guess, an ideal standard of behaviour and and values for councillors. So if we're if we're talking about, I guess, moving it towards a much more formal, codified approach to those issues, I I think you'll lose a lot of the flexibility. On the flip side, you do have a a process which is driven by procedural fairness and natural justice, and it allows people a chance to have their say. So so perhaps that's the only comment I would make, Counselor Robson, to to your points is that I think those those ability or the ability to raise issues is inbuilt in that process. But I think if we went too far down a codified document, we would we would risk getting caught up in quite a procedurally complex process.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Nick. Councillors, any other questions of of either Nick or Coral? All right, that being the case, we have the recommendations for you. How would you like to deal with this? Would you want to do it in parts or do you want to take it as a whole? We obviously need to have D, decide on D or E. Larry, Larry?
Yeah, I I think it would be best if we can get it, you know, all together if we can. Otherwise, depending on how much variation we're looking for, but the D or E is is going to be amended to a an and situation with when we see that on the screen. And I think the other suggested amendments are all sorted and are ready to be looked at, so I think.
I can share my screen now.
Thank you, thank you, Coral.
Just let me know if what comes up. Can you, can you see it?
Not at the moment, Coral. It's just saying you've started to share your screen.
Okay, just let me know when it does come up. Let's say that I'm screen sharing. I'm just wondering if it's on the, I'll just move it over. Can you see it now?
I can't, Coral. I'm just wondering if it's, if it's just struggling to to actually, you know, boot up, so to speak, configure itself.
Coral, would you like me to share from my screen?
I've just got the track changes on a separate document rather than on the Stella, that's all. It says I've started my screen sharing, so maybe it's just taking a moment.
Yeah, at the moment, Coral, we can just see the the black screen saying that you have started screen sharing, but no content yet.
Okay, all right.
Is that the Word document that you sent through earlier?
No, it was the actual Code of Conduct with track changes, but you could put up the one I've shared earlier that might be better and quicker.
You'll need to stop sharing your screen. There we go.
Coral, Raj has just sent you a message about that that may help you to to share.
Okay, all right. My apologies. Has it stopped now?
Yep, stopped now. Would you like to try again, Coral? Would you want me to bring up the other, the Word document?
Might be quicker if you bring up the other Word document.
But that's not the full, that's not the full code, it's just the document that was around earlier.
Yes. I might, I could send it to you, Robin.
Only two more days.
Sorry.
Right, we've got it. Thanks, Rob.
Is that visible, Debraun?
Could you just enlarge a little bit, please?
Oh dear, sorry.
Right, great. Thank you very much.
So the the values there are free speech and transparency, which you can add. So it's page twenty of your agenda. And Counselor Morris has asked to take out the first sentence and the roles and responsibilities. Oh, and I say that I've said I don't agree with Counselor Morris, but that's entirely your choice. Ope dees. Yes, and so for that one, you would just need to make those changes that were sent out. So that would say, right, get to that, that you would just make to fourteen point two point two, you would remove reference to the mayor or from the mayor after initial consideration. Yep. And then you're on to section fifteen, where you would add in the Chief Executive report to the council, that the complaint is found to be material and a decision will be made by the council on whether the council hears the complaint or was referred to the Code of Conduct Committee. So that's your either or. And then you would then need to change appendix D and E. That the Chief Executive would report to the council that the complaint is found to be material and a decision will be made, yeah, on whether it goes to the council or the Code of Conduct. And then there's a, if you keep going up, Robin, there's a appendix E, which if there's change. And if you keep going up, there's a, there's a sentence about, there's the, there's the oath. If you if you wanted to, you could add that in to the preamble. If you keep going up, Robin, sorry, there's a transparency and we've talked about defences to complaints. I think that covered that. And then the idea of a whistleblower is to add to appendix B, that rather large paragraph. So I think the only thing that we haven't really covered is that fourteen point two point two would also require changes to appendix D and E. Yeah. So I don't know if Counselor Morris wants to speak to that. That's where his changes.
Counselor Morris, did you want to speak to this?
I'm happy to speak to it during the resolution.
Mayor Timby, I just wonder if, in order to not have to have separate debates on lots of things, I'm interested in why Counselor Morris wants to change the other preamble in the thing. Why, you know, I I don't understand why that's something he wants. It'd be easier if he could explain it and then we can sort of move it all together as much as possible, but if he doesn't want to, that's fine.
Counselor Morris, what's your feeling about that? Your your microphone is muted.
There we go. Thank you. You know, I'm happy to oblige. Just in terms of the resolutions that I would be proposing, the first one is under under values, the the free speech, members will respect the diversity of thought and opinion that are part of a healthy democracy. What that does is it reflects the statement, which is also in our standing orders. And suffice it to say, I think that over the last six months, I think that that statement would be would be a great affirmation by council colleagues. And the the deletion of the first sentence under four is self-explanatory. In terms of the complaint referred to the mayor, I think in an ideal world, that's how it would work, but I think during the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two triennium, it would be more appropriate to have that go to an independent, just so there's no politics involved, I think, I think, just to keep it clean, to keep it independent. And I'm grateful for the mayor's comments at the beginning of the meeting in that regard. And that flies into fourteen point two point two as well.
If you may allow me, just a question to Counselor Morris.
Certainly. Thank you, Counselor Borro.
It's the one under section four, which you said Counselor Morris was self-explanatory, which for me isn't. And obviously, I'm not catching it, but why are you concerned about that Code of Conduct is designed to strengthen good governance statement is wanting to be removed? I don't quite understand that.
It looks, it it looks like an explanatory note, so I mean, we're not, we're not a district or region, we are a city. And so that's sort of crept in there. I'm happy for it to remain in, but it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a a statement which doesn't actually have any use.
Oh, well, we can. If you're happy to have it on, then my recommendation is we leave it on if council accepts that.
Yeah, I'm happy to, so so long as we get with a regional and or district, because it looks just too much like a copy and paste template. Yeah, thanks, Larry.
All right, Councillors, are there any other comments or can I put the recommendation to you of this? So I've seen to open my screen up again, apologies. Can we, Robin, have that off so we? Thank you very much. Great. I couldn't see any hands up. Is there any other comments before I put the motion to you, Counselor Robson?
Yeah, I'm not certain how we can address the issues I've raised, because can I assume, because some of the things, there's just lines in the document we've seen, but they don't say what's going to happen. So I don't know what wording that I'm being asked to sign off within the Code of Conduct. Am I missing something? You know, I I just wonder whether we're not under pressure here. I think that's one of the important things we should always remember. And I'm just trying to understand whether the proposers of staff are going to go away and write something post us making the decision, or whether the staff are proposing to write something and then bring it back to us. So I'm just trying to get clear on the order of things, because it seems difficult to vote on something when you haven't seen the words.
Yeah, your worship, maybe, Coral, are you in a position to be able to identify the changes through the document? And assuming they are all agreed to, then council could resolve to adopt the Code of Conduct.
Thanks, Marty.
So I'm I'm happy to move a procedural, that this lie on the table to the next council meeting, and the wording just comes back to us. I think the discussion's been had. We already have a Code of Conduct, so we're not under pressure. And 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 that avoids the staff trying to write things and get documents up in a hurry. You know, there's there's no need for a hurry here. We have a council meeting in a couple of days. Would that give staff, I suppose, a question through you, your worship, and thank you for your indulgence to the Chief Executive? Would that be a, rather than us trying to throw things up? And interestingly enough, we're all in the in the room on Thursday, which is almost appropriate in this context.
I would certainly support that if others would. I think it's a very practical approach.
I'll move the procedural. If you were seconded, Mayor Timby, then, I mean, we know the process for procedural.
Could I just make, could I just make a comment before he does?
I just one at a time, please. Yes, I do, John, and answer your question now. I know the procedural motion.
Yeah, we could.
Proceed with it. Thank you. Counselor Borro.
I agree with what John's saying. I just think some of what his comments were, were going a little broader, I thought, that was my understanding of it. And and he's right, we don't have to adopt it today, but we do have a scheduled standing orders training time where we could also explore. If there's, if he wants to explore some other things that haven't been fully identified yet, then, you know, Thursday isn't the deadline either. We could, we could be doing it a little bit later. So I wonder if if that's, you know, we don't need to put a timeframe for it coming back.
I'd be comfortable with that, your worship.
Thank you, and indeed I would be too. So, Councillors, if there's no other commentary, I'll put the procedural motion to you, all in favour of the procedural motion. Please say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Any extensions? The procedural motion is carried. It now becomes a substantive motion.
No, your worship, it's just, it just is.
It just is, is it? Okay, Robin. Coral, thank you very much. Well, in that case, that is carried and we look forward to this debate on on Thursday.
Or whenever.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Counselor, which leads us on to item ten point two on your agenda, the Local Government Funding Agency Notice of Special General Meeting. Mohan, I think you're there to talk us through this. Thank you very much.
Mayor Timby, I'll introduce it if that's okay.
Thank you.
So so Local Government Funding Agency, as we know, have recommended that there's an increase in the borrowing ratio to three hundred percent with a sinking rate, bringing that down to two hundred and eighty percent by thirtieth of June twenty-six. This report is an endorsement of that approach and to provide effectively our approval for staff to attend via proxy for the, at the special general meeting on the thirtieth of June to vote accordingly to that. So I'll take any questions and Mohan's available as well.
Thank you very much, Paul.
At the right time, happy to move.
Thank you, John. Councillors, questions of either Mohan or Paul prior to putting this motion to you? There being no questions, we have a move. Can I, Tina, is that a second?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Counsel, so John has moved Tina a second. Councillors, I put this to you, all those in favour?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions and carry. Thank you very much, which moves us on to ten point three. Amendments to the traffic and parking by law, two thousand and twelve. We have a number of staff, Wayne and Brendan, I presume you'll be, or Nick, are you going to introduce this?
Yeah, I can introduce this. Thank you, Mayor Timby. And as as you said, there are, there are staff available to, through some of this, but this is a report that comes to you with some regularity, not so frequently, so it is tends to be voluminous. It's, it is operational and it outlines changes implemented under the traffic control device rules, which is quite a highly regulated area and needs to be required, it needs to be recognised under the, under the bylaw to be able to be enforced. It is often safety driven, often driven by feedback from our community, which we then follow up on, often safety generated, but not always, which, for instance, applies to the, to the bus stops and markings around those. So that's just sort of a highlight. So that's just sort of a highlight, an outline of what's, what the report is about. It stipulates issues around turning, parking, stopping, bus stops and cycle paths, et cetera. Some new and some are reverted. So there are two schedules attached to the report. One is a sort of a higher level, outlines line, line item by line item at, at a high level, what it is. And then a second appendix, which goes into a little bit more detail about the exact locality. So I'm, I'm happy to take any questions or.
Thank you very much, Nick. There may be questions, and there may be specific questions from councillors who have ward responsibilities and specific issues of traffic flows. I have councillor Bulldog firstly. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Temby. Thanks, Nick. Yeah, I noticed some, some changes occurring around Anzac Road and 22nd Ave. And there I was contacted by a resident recently and I flicked it through Democracy for you to have a look at. But I just wondered if staff are already aware of the growing problems around 21st and 23rd Avenue with student parking cars all day in very narrow streets. And I know that the resident that approached me said he had seen staff there monitoring the place and so on. I just would like to hear if that's perhaps ready for the next review, that we're, when the staff are looking into it.
It is, it is one that we are aware of. I couldn't tell you exactly where we are at with the investigation into it. And obviously, nothing has been implemented in, in that latest feedback for this one. So it would be one that we would follow up on for the next report. But as these aren't very frequent, it might be something that we implement, but it then can't be enforced until the bylaw has been passed, which would be after the next time we take this report to council.
Thank, thank you, Nick. Councillors, any, any other questions of Nick in relation to these recommendations? I don't believe there are any. In which case I'll ask for a mover and a second please.
Yeah, I'm happy to move.
Thank you, councillor Clout. Can I have a second please? Councillor Bulldog? Councillor Clout, did you want to speak to this?
I'll just briefly, thanks to Nick and the team for developing these specific changes. And, you know, they come through every few months to us, so thanks very much for the procedural. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bulldog? Councillor Bulldog, did you want a second or did you want to speak to this? You did not. Okay, thank you very much. Any other councillors which to speak to this at all? Thank you. In which case I'll put the motion to you. All those in favour, please say aye.
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 Aye. Against? Extentions and carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Temby. Thank you, councillors.
Yeah, Nick, thank you very much and to your team for all the work that's gone into this. It was clearly a volume of work, that's for sure. So much appreciated. Council, this moves us through to item 11, unless I've missed a page, as we've done, item 10.4. Discussion of late items. I don't believe there are any, which takes us to the public excluded session. Can I have a mover and a second please to move it to the public excluded session?
I may do.
Councillor Salisbury, thank you. And a second please. Councillor Ivery, thank you very much. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Extentions and carried. Robin, or I'm not sure who's working the, the comms today, but if you could now turn off the live stream, please.